Hello. My name is Mary Strufford. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Duluth and a trained and certified League of Women Voters moderator. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, I would like to thank the candidates for their willingness to participate in government and this general election forum for the District Four in Duluth City Council seats. The forum will be presented on PAC TV and linked to the League of Women Voters of Duluth website. The League posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. You may share the forum in its entirety. The League of Women Voters believes that an informed citizenry is the foundation of effective democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation. It is a volunteer organization working at local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we, as a League, do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at this forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters of Duluth, and sponsorship of this forum is not League endorsement of any individual candidates participating. The League of Women Voters of Duluth realizes that creative and innovative policies and practices are forged out of diverse points of view. We believe diverse perspectives are necessary for responsible and representative decision-making. We will sustain our commitment to welcome and facilitate diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our work. We strive to include people from a mix of abilities and backgrounds in all our activities. At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates for Duluth City Council District Four, David Klana and Tara Swenson. Our forum will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement followed by the questioning round. Questions have been vetted by the League of Women Voters of Duluth Forum Committee and questions submitted by League members and citizens. Candidates were not given the questions in advance. Each candidate will be given up to one and a half minutes in which to provide their responses to the questions. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked questions in a rotating order. After the question round is complete, each candidate will be allowed a two-minute closing statement prior to the end of the forum. The candidates will now provide their prepared opening statements. And we will start with candidate Tara Swenson.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting David and I in today. It's always nice to have these conversations and understand what the concerns are of our constituents. So, I am Tara Swenson, the city councillor for District Four, which is Lincoln Park, Piedmont, the Heights, and Observation Hill. I moved to Duluth 15 years ago, and I moved here, I started my career in HR, and now I'm the clinic director of a healthcare organization in the Twin Ports. I have since met my husband, who is a laborer for local 1091, which he has been in for 19 years. We have two kids, an eight and five-year-old, and since moving here 15 years ago, I've made this home. And that's why I really ran for council, was to make sure the lives of my children and all the children in Duluth had the opportunity to thrive. When I think about what my priorities are and really what drove me to do this, it was them. And so that was really around safety. And so a big platform of mine in the past, you know, two years in council has been public safety and making sure that we are supporting our police and fire. And then a big push beyond that was our snow removal process, so making sure we have safe streets, safe infrastructure for them as well. I will continue to focus on those initiatives and then continue to grow economic development as well. And so making sure that we have the opportunity and the ability for businesses to come into Duluth, to thrive here and to grow here. And so it has been an honor to be your councillor for the past two years. I have learned so much and we have done a lot together, but I'm very excited to continue that for another four years.
Thank you. You're gonna have to excuse me, I have to do the timing as well. So, next candidate, David?
Thank you, Mary, League of Women Voters and viewers. As a former journalist who has worked with the League, I deeply appreciate our shared commitment to democracy, a core element of common sense in our society. I'm running because I believe councillors must be engaged and willing to bring your issues before city government. We must be visible and widely known by name, approachable and responsive. We must be respectful and hospitable, especially when not understanding or agreeing. We have great people doing the city's work during these challenging times, they need extra support. I'm a quick study with the people, experiences, and skills, and a healthy dose of persistence to be a strong voice for District Four. My life started in a struggling working-class home, disconnected utilities, being evicted, a semi-killing one brother, another brother disabled because of defective housing. Thankfully, grandparents stepped in. Caring adults taught me that tough experiences can build relationships and improve lives. They set the stage for a lifetime of diverse community service, and they are alongside me today. I worked myself through college and became a journalist, earning a Pulitzer Prize nomination. I then became a community mental health councillor. I worked in the Duluth YMCA mentoring program, ran Damiano's Kids Kitchen, co-founded the Rhubarb Festival with Chum, and led our Regional Habitat for Humanity. Currently, I'm a MAPE steward. I negotiated a contract for 18,000 state workers, and I serve on our state board. I know how to listen deeply, research, identify options, and solve problems for the greater good. As a taxpayer and a public servant, I embrace transparency and accountability. My wife Tracy and I have been blessed to raise three children in our unique community, and when I help a family, it's like helping my family. I will do that in District Four with all families.
Thank you, David. We will now start with the questions that have been prepared. Each candidate will get a minute and a half, and I just want to say that I will as gently as possible let you know when your time is up. And we will begin with candidate David. And I'd like to ask you, what prompted you to pursue a seat on the city council, and what strengths would you bring to this position?
Thank you for that question. I was deeply honored to be asked by a wide range of friends to run for this position. I actually did not wake up one morning and say, "Hey, I'm running for city council." I mean, I've done so much public service that I feel like my life has been full because of that. However, when people really honored me by reaching out to me, and when they pointed out my background, my skill set, my experiences, my ability to build relationships among a wide range of people, identify common ground, find unidentified ways of solving problems, when they brought that all before me, I'm like, you know what, I'm called to do this. And, you know, I love this community, it's given me so much over the last 26 years, and we have so many strengths and unique features, but we also have serious major problems and challenges. And I'm one of these folks who sort of gets all people on deck and engages out-of-the-box thinking. And what I've seen is sometimes we get into the same things that we try over and over again, and we need to sort of open that up. And I would love to be part of working with fellow councillors toward that end.
Thank you. And next we have candidate Tara. What prompted you to pursue a seat on the city council, and what strengths would you bring to that position?
Thank you. What prompted me was my children, and beyond that, it was the children in Duluth. And when I looked at that, it was three years ago when we had snow removal issues in our community, and so school was canceled multiple days in a row. And as a mom, the mama bear kind of came out, and I didn't understand why. And I was very frustrated by not understanding why when I worked in healthcare, and I understood the impact that that had on patient safety. So, when parents have to call in and we have snow days, it really puts everybody at a disadvantage in our community. And so, parents are calling into work, which again is impacting patient care. Then the other side of it, my husband works in the trades, and when they have to call in, they don't get paid for those days that they miss of work. And so then the financial impact that happens on families was a concern of mine. And then beyond that, it was the kids, right? And so when I thought about that, they're missing school, so potentially they're missing their meals, their shelter, their love, their community, and that is unacceptable. So, that's really where I tried to dig in, and that's what motivated me to run, is figuring out what are the issues and why are they issues, and then how do we better communicate that to our constituents. So, I was able to work with the street maintenance crew, as well as fire, police, and some of the other community partners to really look into our snow emergency route and figure out what were the issues and what was the impact of those issues. So we have created a new one, it was approved by council, so hopefully we'll get some snow this year, and then we can see how that works in real action.
Let's talk about how you will connect with the people in your district.
Are you ready for me to go on this?
I'm ready for you to go.
Okay. Well, I mean, yes, we have a very diverse district, probably the most diverse district in our city, four distinct neighborhoods. And as a candidate, I've just been knocking a massive number of doors, and my message to people has been, it doesn't stop at there. It entails constantly showing up, constantly getting the message out in the community that I'm available, and I welcome input, including critical feedback. In fact, that's the most important input there is, I believe. I belong to a lot of community organizations, and so I engage at that level, and I get to various events in the neighborhoods. I believe that, and I've been thinking about this, how to get regular citizen input, like maybe having regular open houses, putting up a website that's really user-friendly so folks feel comfortable reaching out. The Neighborhood Night Out, we had 11 of those in our neighborhood, and I didn't make them all the night of, but I made the rest of them afterwards. And the last one I made was up on Swan Lake Road and had a lovely conversation with folks. So I really think it's presenting oneself as approachable, as, you know, I am your representative, your go-to person, and anything you have that matters, bring it to me. And I will come out to you too, because sometimes things, people need to be encouraged to reach out.
As a candidate of District Four, how best will you connect with citizens in your district?
Absolutely. As a candidate, and then currently, right, as the councillor, they're one in the same in the sense, so, like David, outdoing a massive amount of door-knocking right now, reaching out to constituents. But while on council, that dynamic changes a little bit, you're not necessarily door-knocking with individuals, but it's inviting them in. So I've tried to be very transparent with my constituents of where I'm going and what community events I'm attending, in the event to hopefully build some of those relationships and those connections, so people know where to reach me, because sometimes it's intimidating to call your councillor or to reach out to them directly. So if you can do it with somebody else alongside of you, that makes it a little bit more comfortable. So I try very hard to communicate where I'm going and what I'm going to be doing. And then just, it's really through communication, right? So it's at council meetings, talking to individuals, when they're reaching out through email or phone, following up, creating that connection. I've tried to be extremely approachable in every sense that I can be, in understanding where people are coming from, because I think that's what makes us great councillors, is that when you're able to connect with people that aren't like you. So I can go back to the individuals that have routinely supported me through the campaign and as a councillor, but oftentimes, a group think can get going on in that sense. So it's really looping in other individuals that maybe I don't know as much about that topic on, or I don't have experience in that. So working to build those bridges across different demographics in our district is extremely important. We do have a very diverse district, from Lincoln Park to the Heights, all the way up to the Air Park, so we have a lot of work to do in that sense.
Thank you. Okay. Tara, food deserts still exist in the city. Access to food sources affects senior citizens, people with disabilities, financially disadvantaged individuals and families. Transportation can be a barrier. What is currently being done, or should be done, to solve these issues?
Thank you. Lincoln Park is the one that usually comes into this topic of a food desert. We obviously have others in our community, but this is the one that often drives this conversation. One of that, so we have Community Action, right, that does quite a bit of work with this, with the mobile food market. We also have Seed Library, so not only teaching people how to get food, but how to grow that food and how to live off of the land in a sense, right? We also have community gardens that people can utilize, so I think we're going that route. Eco3 has received a grant in order to get a grocery store going, that sense. So really making sure that, also as a city, when I think about, you know, what is our other role in this, it's making sure development is easy. So if somebody wants to come and put in a small grocery store or a small market, how do we make that a possibility for them? And so really looking with our planning, Economic Development Department to see what, where's our gap in that, so that when people want to come and do those things, we can say yes to them. And so that's something that I am pretty passionate about, is really looking at the planning process so that we can support individuals that have that passion to do it. So, there's lots of services in the area, but when I think of the city's role, I think that it's giving people the tools to do that job effectively, so that they feel empowered to do it as well.
Thank you. David, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm quite good with that.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's a food desert, but even more than that, it's a healthy food desert. I mean, we've had some progress in our communities with additional convenience stores tied with gas stations, but by and large, the food available there is not broadly healthy. And so we need to increase the availability of healthy food. And yes, certainly Eco3, Jody and her crew, worked with them through the AmeriCorps program, the Community Action Agency, these are nonprofit organizations doing a great job in addressing the food desert situation in our community. You know, Lincoln Park, holding those regular farmers' markets at the Harrison Center, for You know, businesses, I think about the Duluth's Best Bread that opened up on the corner of Grand and 27th, Third Street, actually it's Third Street there. So, and we do have a lot of gardeners, in fact, I'm a huge gardener. I mean, I'm not as huge a gardener as I was last year, and we're trying to figure out how to process the food we have, but the really cool thing about the gardening that I do is it connects with neighbors. I can't tell you how many neighbors I've shared rhubarb and other things with, and I wonder if there's a way that we can connect gardeners together in sort of a cooperative manner to offer additional healthy food throughout the community, working in partnership with our nonprofits, and definitely small businesses, encouraging them to find their niches in this area.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, we'll start with David. What are your ideas for increasing city revenues and/or decrease city expenses that would have the least impact on taxpayers?
Right. This is the absolutely most pressing issue that's facing us currently. So thank you for that question. And as a manager of budgets, I mean, one thing about nonprofit leadership, you're an entrepreneur, you're a businessperson, and you really need to know your budgets, because the budgets oftentimes are based on grants and donors, so a strong budgetary sense, I bring this to potentially serving. Property taxes, people, I'm consistently hearing this across the income spectrum, are just really pressing hard on people. We need to figure out ways of holding the line on property taxes, which are, you know, approximately a third of our budget. We need to really, the will at the legislative level. Local government aid has been allowed to languish, and fortunately, we have a strong legislative contingent from northeast Minnesota. And I know all of these folks in the Duluth area personally, so I'd work with them. We need to really look for operational efficiencies. We have a really great workforce. We need to fully engage them for every possible idea we can muster. We need, in my experience in the public sector right now, where we tend to have the most fat is in management and administrative, so we might have to make some hard choices there. And we certainly need to continue to promote development that works for everybody in our neighborhoods, because building our tax base and with the affordable housing piece, those are essential components of this.
Thank you. Tara, what are your ideas for increasing city revenues and decreasing and/or decreasing city expenses that would have the least impact on taxpayers?
It is economic development, in my mind, which is a really big word and can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So one of the things that I look at, right, is last year, for the first time in 10 years, we passed a 0% property tax levy, and this year, we're now looking at a 3.7%. But a large portion of that, that we're kind of forgetting about, is that new growth mentality piece of it. So we can look at the different developments specifically, if you look at District Four that have come in, they've generated over $600,000 in our tax base, which those, you know, few projects made up like 40% of that budget. And so I think we really need to stop and think about how do we encourage development here? So if you look at Sofidel, $1.5 million expansion, 150 new jobs. So we have to be able to invite these people into our community to do the business that they want to do. Another project that I was a co-author on while being on council was the UDC reform, and looking at that through a lens of how do we make this easier for developers? And so huge recognition to the Planning Department that brought, you know, suggestions forward on things that we could change or eliminate, so that we can continue to grow that tax base. Ultimately, that if we can bring in more housing, more developers, more businesses, that will decrease the burden to the individual residents of a taxpayer. And then I know that city staff this year specifically is really digging into internal operations, and how do we focus on that and how do we better align ourselves so that we can be more productive and be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers?
What, Tara, we will start with you next. What programs or services for youth in our community are working? What could we be implemented or changed to improve programs or services?
We, Duluth is a community that is extremely engaged, and I'm sure David can agree to that as well, that people are really invested and really contribute back to making sure that we are supporting our youth. So we have amazing programs, if you look at like Chester Bowl, for example, that creates the ski program, has summer camp, and a bunch of other activities out there to encourage community. Another great model is the GND, and what Mark Bobin has done out there with that development and that team, it's just remarkable to see. So I think we have a very compassionate and very engaged community that's continuing to give back to our youth, so that we can build that community connection and have people out in the neighborhoods. What I think we can do better is encouraging maybe more partnerships in that. And when I think of it, you know, when I look at our Parks Department, how do we encourage more partnerships in there like the GND, so that we can invite people in and really grow and see those, that youth in our community flourish? And so that is one of my goals as I go into this next term, hopefully, is that I will have that opportunity to figure out, as the liaison to Parks and Rec, how do we, how do we bring in partners to create that foundation in our community?
Thank you. Tara, I would like you to, you use the term GNT?
Yes.
Could you please identify that for our audience?
The Gary New Duluth Rec Center.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Not everybody may be familiar with that, I wasn't, so. David, what programs or services for youth in our community are working? What could be implemented or changed to improve programs and services?
Yes, Duluth, we have an incredible variety of neighborhood-based programming. And as a person who worked in the mentoring program, I was sort of in the hub of that for a while. And good work, sometimes competitive, sometimes redundant, so how to really continue to encourage nonprofit organizations to work together to manage that, so that they can then expand and offer more services. Piedmont Youth Hockey, had a great time there Sunday at their open house. I mean, what's really cool about that organization is it's very inclusive-oriented to engage children and youth sports. So that, you know, is an example. One of the challenges is in our Parks and Recs, a number of years back, there was a decision to sort of put the neighborhood centers, align them with nonprofits. And nonprofits have the capacities to step up in some neighborhoods, but to a lesser degree in others. I look at our Duluth Heights neighborhood, for example, you know, that community center, it's not as utilized as it was, and that could be a great hub of youth services I'd want to look into. Childcare is a huge challenge. We really need to support childcare, because that's youth services. During that Neighborhood Night Out I was talking about, had the opportunity to meet a family that just started a nature-based childcare. We really need to support things like that.
David, you may or may not be familiar with the Duluth Climate Action Work Plan. What role do you see the council having in reducing climate change effects in Duluth?
Great question. I mean, we're being identified as a climate refuge, and yet, you know, all summer long, we had a lot of, or smoke, right, a lot of the summer, so maybe we're not so much of a refuge, unfortunately. This climate action plan is very important. My sense is there's been some desire to try to put the brakes on some of that, and yet I think it needs to be full steam ahead. And speaking of steam, the steam plant is an example of a place where we've made some major progress there with the conversion away from coal. Public transit is a key area where we can, you know, make savings in terms of climate carbon and all. Housing, one of the coolest habitat projects I was part of was the house we built in Lincoln Park in partnership with Minnesota Power, building a high-energy house and setting it up, even though we didn't have the resources at the time, that it could be easily converted to solar, and because it's all-electric. So looking how we can utilize our local resources, development that's close to home, thinking holistically. I'm really proud of having two daughters who are into environmental studies, that's an ethic of our family, and I look to those two young people as consultants in this and also as spurs.
Thank you. Tara, you are probably aware of the Duluth Climate Action Work Plan, and what role do you see the council having in reducing climate change effects in Duluth?
Absolutely. This is, you know, multi-levels and different ways that you can approach it and how you really look at it. So one can be when we are approving different purchases throughout the city, right? So if we have hybrid vehicles or ensuring that whether that's our fleet for street maintenance, or if that's our fleet for, you know, police, fire, that we are looking at the hybrid option of that to help control it. Also, lead line replacement projects that have been approved, a large majority in Lincoln Park right now, I mean, that's another project, that huge recognition to the staff for the amount of grant funding of $12 million that they got for that, so that we can have safe drinking water. Street sweepers seems very basic, but how do we pick up some of the dirt and, you know, the garbage that's on our streets, so that that doesn't run off into our streams and into our lakes? We also need to look at our salt usage. So as we go into the winter months, you know, what are other tools that we can utilize to ensure that our streets are still safe, but we're also protecting our community? As I think about another project that we've put through, it's solar energy, and so if you look at Minnesota Power and their solar garden out on Gene Duluth, and, you know, how do we bring renewable energy that's also still fiscally responsible? Because it's unfortunately maybe a slower movement, because there's a lot of federal funding that comes into this that we also need to consider. But those are some of the things that we have done, and I would continue to press on our departments to make sure that we are being responsible.
Thank you. Okay, this is, we'll start with Tara next. With all the events in Duluth and the number of visitors, should recycling be a priority, and how could the city implement a more visible and successful program?
We do have a ton of events, and I give huge recognition to Resource Renew on the work that they do on this. I think a large portion of this is education to constituents and guests that come into our community. As we look at that, I think of like Grandma's Marathon, and they usually have you set your trash down, and then they have people there to sort it, which is great. your, your trash down, and then they have people there to sort it, which is great because you don't have to think about it, but you're also not learning how to do it. I'm on the Aquarium Board, and if we have any sort of food or snack, they're always educating us on what goes where. And I think that's really critical, and especially if we can continue to teach our youth that, they'll continue to grow up, and we have so much to learn from them in that sense. One of the other things that I think that we've done a good job with, if you look at like Glensheen, for example, parking and getting down there can be a little bit tricky and challenging. So I think Vibrant Streets put out, you know, a really good story on the amount of bike parking they have and how they encourage bike travel. And so I think, you know, other events could come on to that. We could also see not only the recycling piece of it, but just the, the emissions into the air through our vehicles. And if we can have more bikes or walkers or scooters, whatever they choose to do, we could see an impact on that as well.
David?
Yes, Mary, that, that's a great question and a perfect follow-up to the previous question about the Climate Action Plan. And recycling is important, I mean, but reducing and reusing are also important. Consumption, we need to consume in order to live, but we need to figure out ways to be smarter consumers. Composting, you know, related to the food desert, right, getting more compost out in the community. Right, so there's all these different ways to sort of link these together, and recycling is a key thing. However, it's one part in terms of the reduce Duluth effort. And I would want to really equally, if not more emphasize how can reduce, reduce? How can you reuse? How can we, at the front end of planning things, think lifespan about things? Because oftentimes what happens is we're all just so fired up about getting going with something, and then we don't think about, okay, now what do we do when this thing has outlived its useful life? You know, I want to circle back to the economic development piece. I think Duluth and the region has an excellent opportunity, going back to the climate piece, to really focus on green development. I mean, the history of this region, the, the types of resources we have here, our transportation hub, we could really, really project this forward. And granted, that's a challenge given sort of current political realities, but I think we need to stay fast and believe that it's possible and that we can be a leader in this area.
Thank you. So next, we'll start with you, David. There is still a large Duluth population of unsheltered adults lacking safe housing, services, and resources in our community. What initiatives would you support to further recognize them as residents and address their needs?
That is an excellent question, near and dear to my heart, as somebody who's worked with CHUM and Damiano Habitat Humanity. We really need to work hard to shift the discourse, the thinking about homelessness. I mean, yeah, some folks, you know, I gotta, I had a great conversation with a traditional Republican about this, and she's like, you know, we really, really need to look at the mental health and addiction aspects of homelessness, and we need to stop moralizing about it. The vast majority of people do not want to be homeless. They want to be fully engaged members of society, they want to be neighbors, they want to be contributors. We need to, you know, continue to work very closely with all of our nonprofits addressing this. We need to work with them to be more efficient. We need to have an investment mindset in terms of how we engage resources with this. The crisis response team is a huge opportunity. We need to, when neighbors, I mean, homelessness is, it's one of these strange things. It feels unsafe, even though the vast majority of people are not threats, but it feels that way. And so we really need to engage our communities in deep conversations about what they're experiencing and try to open up space to understand, you know, these are our neighbors, and, and they want to be part of life here. And, you know, what if they can become part of life here, the community is going to do that much better.
Thank you. Tara, would you like me to read the question again?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, though. So homelessness, nobody wants to be homeless. I truly do believe that, and I am very proud of the work that as a council we have done to support the nonprofits in this org, in this field, and then also the individuals that are homeless. So one of them is Safe Bay and relocating that up to the Vineyard Church. Granted, very controversial, but continuing to work with that community on both sides of it to figure out how do we best navigate where these individuals can be and where they can be safe. I also, you know, we, in November, $500,000 of ARPA funds were given, COVID relief funds were given to CHUM in order to, or to Damiano, excuse me, in order to support that transition while CHUM goes through their remodel. So the city is investing in that to try to ensure that we are giving them tools to success. I've also approved the max tax levy for the HRA, Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and that's strictly to go to Mission Heights for Union Gospel, and the work that they are doing is incredible. So I'm very excited to hopefully see that project come to fruition here as we've continued to invest in it. But ultimately, this is about, you know, the compassion versus accountability. We do have to continue to hold these individuals accountable to, you know, the expectations that we have and the norms that we have in our community, and hopefully divert them to resources to get that support that they do need. Because we, we want to help them, but they also have to want to help themselves throughout that situation. So it's really trying to be a partner in it throughout our community.
Thank you. Okay, Tara, we'll start with you next. Housing projects and construction are happening everywhere in Duluth, it seems. What types of housing are still needed, especially for constituents in your district?
Thank you, yes. Housing on the Maxfield Study just had a presentation yesterday to talk about this, and council had a, a small committee of the, or a shorter committee of the whole regarding it as well. And it, in my opinion, for the district that I've heard, is senior housing. So people do want to age in place, and they want to continue to be in their communities. So I think that is one of the focuses that we do really need to focus on, and making sure that those individuals that are living in their home, that they can move into maybe a smaller home, and then a, a single family can move into there so that we can have the progression of people moving, hopefully, you know, through the different housing options that we have in our community. And I'm happy, again, we've talked about it a little bit, but the UDC support that we're doing to get this done. You know, there's things in there around making, you know, pedestrian or transit friendly. So when it's on a DTA bus route, how do we make sure that the housing around there is maybe a little bit more concentrated to support people that may have transportation, either issues or really enjoy that part of transportation and how they get back and forth to different places? So I would say aging in place, the, and then really it's market rate housing too that I'm hearing, and that will offset some of the affordability. So we need to continue to grow that because we have a huge demand, which is continuing to increase the pricing of whether that's rental units or individual, single-family
David?
I, I feel called a bit to respond to the discussion about homelessness. I work with high-level civilly committed sex offenders, so every day it's about accountability. But one thing I find with people who have gotten themselves into really difficult life expectations is they often aren't, aren't included in helping to define expectations and norms. It's easy for us to talk about our expectations and norms, like us, them. We really need to bring people together and find ways for voices that have been muted or even suppressed to be heard. That, that I believe is really important, because most folks, they want to be good neighbors. I believe that in my heart. Shifting to the housing piece, senior housing is huge. As somebody who had an agent place program at Habitat Humanity, yes, definitely senior housing. Infill housing, we got a lot of developable, developable lots. We need to have permitting and processes that makes that happen. We need to find the right mix of single and multifamily housing based on site conditions. People want to develop apartments in their homes, and I've heard stories from homeowners where they've tried to go about this, and they run into some obstacles and are frustrated. We did, we need to do this infrastructure smart, too. I mean, it's great to talk about development, but if we're expanding infrastructure without long-term plans, that might be a problem down the road.
Thank you. Okay, next. This is our last question, and we'll start with David. What is an important challenge facing our city that has not been addressed in the questions we've addressed here today?
I think public safety. I mean, we, we touched on it briefly, and I appreciated Tara's opening comments about that, because you know what? Just like housing is one of those essential things, when you look at human developmental needs, safety, housing, food, clothing, right, these are basic. And if a person isn't feeling safe in their neighborhood, how can we really function? I mean, we will carry that around with us every day, we'll be dreaming about it, and it'll, it'll just, the stress of it will erode us. And, you know, related to the homelessness and these other issues, right? People need to feel safe, and if we're perceiving we're not feeling safe, we're not safe. We're gonna act differently. We're gonna potentially react in a way that triggers something that we never would have imagined happening. So we really need to support public safety in our community, and we need to do it in a holistic manner. I mean, I have incredible regard for our firefighters and our police officers. I'm looking forward to a ride-along on Friday evening, for example. And when you look at the firefighters do, holy smokes. But we need to be holistic with this, and we need to take it seriously, and we need to find ways of supporting all these different pieces that reduce the stress on the, sort of what we think of as the core public safety people, so that some of those issues are reduced more proactively rather than reactively addressed.
Thank you. Tara, what is an important issue that we haven't addressed yet?
I think there's, there's a couple, and the one I'm going to focus on is childcare. And I know David did briefly mention, as we talked about our youth, but I do see childcare as economic development in our community, and if families don't have a place for their children, a safe place for their children to go during the day, it makes them going into the workforce extremely challenging. And so I think we do need to, as a city, look at what is our role in the childcare sector, right? Because so much of it is done through the county, and I've had lots of conversations with childcare providers in our community about what role we play, and then how do we partner and be good partners with the county in this? So one of the things that I did do is, Councilor nephew and I had a resolution that came forward that allowed, that changed the zoning for childcare centers. So now a childcare center can be in a residential neighborhood, very similar to a school. So that's in hopes to create more availability for childcare. Usually, the cost of the building and the rent is lower in a residential area than a commercial area, so to help offset that. I also, on the 1200 fund, as the board member, I spearheaded the grant program that was just released and had a press conference because it is so critical to support these childcare providers. And so we gave out almost, you know, $500,000 in grants to our community that, one time, that they can use to offset some of the expenses that they have in their community. So we need to continue down that path of supporting our childcare providers.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will have our closing statements. I'm sorry, I have to find my paperwork here a minute. You each get two minutes this time for a closing statement, and we begin with David.
Thank you again. It's been incredible listening to diverse citizens at hundreds of doors, attending district events, engaging community orgs and businesses. This has reinforced my core belief. We need highly visible, approachable, and responsive counselors, deeply committed to democracy, and partnering with citizens from all walks of life. If elected, I want constituents to know my name, to share their experiences of respect, listening, responsiveness, and support, even if we didn't completely agree or couldn't solve the problem at hand. I've learned through a lifetime of community service to not seek credit, but to focus on relationships, results, and stakeholder engagement. We face serious issues: affordable housing, infrastructure, neighborhood vitality. My experiences as a nonprofit leader can help our community bring more people on deck as we get out of the box to increase affordable housing for lower and middle-income neighbors. We have resources, capacity, and passion right in our midst that can be tapped and connected with the city government that reduces barriers and smartly invests your dollars as taxpayers. Duluth's rugged environment will always pose infrastructure challenges. We need comprehensive, long-term plans with clear priorities and exceptional communication that manages stress and expectations. Uplifting lower-stress lives start in neighborhoods. We need safe, clean parks. We need community centers and clean, and third spaces for everyone to connect and flourish, humanely, thoughtfully, and assertively addressing the economic pressures and poverty many of us face and fear. I bring a thoughtful, well-rounded, people-oriented approach focused on ordinary people, struggles, and dreams. We need citizens in all neighborhoods, especially District Four, to experience equitable sharing of resources and attention with equitable results. Check out my social media and website to learn more, and thank you.
Thank you. Tara?
Yes. Thank you, Mary. Thank you to the League for inviting us in again, and thank you to the voters and to the residents that have really supported me the last two years. I have learned so much stepping into this role. When I look back, like I said, I moved to Duluth 15 years ago, and I didn't know a single person. So I've always been very comfortable putting myself into situations, taking that risk, meeting new people and building connections. I've built my career here and my family here. Throughout my career, I've built amazing teams and around communication and success in that. So I will continue to bring that to council. I'm very proud of the work that as councilors we have done in the last two years. When I think about it, last year, the 0% tax levy, this year, 3.7% tax levy, these are incredible milestones that we do need to celebrate, and we need to recognize our city staff, and then also our councilors for holding the line on that. When we look at our streets, that was the reason I ran, right, was the snow removal process of it. So the work that had been done around Anger of West Skyline, and it sounds like unfortunately we had another hit in our district yesterday. So we'll continue that work, not in the same spot, luckily, but we're gonna have to continue that work of what do safe streets look like, and how do we encourage people to slow down in those areas, because we know that is the number one reason for crashes. Also, all the work that we're doing on West Superior Street, when we think about Lincoln Park, so this is a huge project that'll be starting in 2026, and so continuing to partner with those businesses in the Lincoln Park Business Group to make sure that we can be successful in that. Whether that's public safety and the common sense ordinances we pass to encourage accountability across our markets to housing, so continuing to look at our UDC. But one thing I will commit is that I will continue to stay in the lane of the city. And I have proven that over and over again, what the city's role is and what we play in that. And so I will continue to bring councilors back to that. And outside of council chambers, I'm happy to engage and participate in those conversations, but we do need to be respectful of our taxpayer dollars and how we're spending them.
Thank you both. This concludes the candidate forum for Duluth City Council District Four seat. It is our purpose in sponsoring events such as this to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to you. There is never enough time to cover all the issues in a limited time setting. If your questions were not addressed, you should feel free to contact the candidates directly. We hope this helps you learn more about the candidates and issues so that you can make informed choices at the polls on Tuesday, November 4th. We thank the candidates, PACT TV, and the viewers of this forum. PACT TV will broadcast this forum and others. Check their listings for a schedule of times. The forums will also be posted on the League of Women Voters of Duluth website, L W V Duluth dot org. Thank you.
Thank you.